Just as a reminder, if everyone would please make sure your cell phones are on silent. Appreciate it. We'll start the meeting with the public hearing for the acquisition of MAP 223 lot 29 pursuant to RSA 4114A. This is the public hearing for the acquisition of 5.42 acres back to the town from Chestnut Woods.
And just a quick summary for the community, the RSA 4114A process is two public hearings separated by two weeks. There'll be a second public hearing on December 2nd with the final vote by the select board on December 16th. Prior to tonight's meeting, this went to the Conservation Commission, Planning Board, and Town Lands Committee for recommendation. All three groups supported the acquisition of this lot. The statute requires a planning board and Conservation Commission recommendation prior to consideration from the select board. So this is the first step of a six-week process.
Is there any comment or anything you'd like to say about it? Hearing none. I will close that public hearing and move on to the second one, which is the acquisition of a portion of MAP 223 lot 26, also pursuant to 4114A. This lot is ultimately going to be the new town hall building lot. Any comments from board? Any public comment? Any comments from the advisory budget committee? Alright, hearing none, I will close that public hearing.
Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I would like to ask your indulgence to make an amendment to the agenda for tonight. I would like to add the approval of the minutes from meetings of 10:28, 19, 11:04, 19. They do not appear on our agenda, and I'd like to ensure that we vote for that to put them on the agenda.
I agree with that amendment. Any disagreements now? So unanimous decision to add the meeting minutes to the agenda.
Thank you.
Struggling with my words.
Good catch, Mr. Bailey, thank you.
Alright. With that being said, appointments, the budget presentation, there are no appointments, but we do have a budget presentation for the Highway Department. So I will turn that over for the budget presentation for the Highway Department and the budget presentation for the Transfer Station, followed by a review of the Transfer Station's preliminary analysis.
So the follows following along, the Highway Department and dam's budget you'll find in section 18 of your budget binder. The Transfer Station will be in section 19, and Mark Morrow Road Agent will be presenting with the assistance of Aaron Paradise. For select board members, in your packet you have an updated cover sheet which reflects the benefit changes from earlier in the year, and you also have one for the Transfer Station reflecting the same, that they were discussed and distributed advisory budget committee.
I'm not gonna bore you with very many unnecessary details. The first six lines of the budget, out of our control, the salaries, hourly wages, COLA and merit. It is what it is, thank you very much. The lines that really matter, line 4442, the rental line, if we ended up purchasing an excavator at this point, it's very unclear if that is gonna be so, but that could potentially reduce that line by $20,000 because we wouldn't have to rent one, because we'd already have one. Again, that's still kind of up in the air. Line 4531, the communications line. I've been talking with Rick Walker about the potential of using the town's tower and repeater, or putting in a repeater of our own, because our communication truck-to-truck is really not strong at all, depending which side of town you're in. It's a problem. I've been talking to Two Way Communications, and they have basically given me a not-to-exceed number of $10,000 for another repeater and the tower work. And work to our own separate unit radios in conjunction with all of this, basically a tune-up of everything we've got to go along with putting us on the repeater. It could substantially be in the $8,000 range, but they told me figure $10,000 for a budgetary number. Again, this was, the surface of this just got scratched like Friday of last week, so it's still in its infancy. Line 4562, the uniforms, that's down $2,000 in the 2020 budget. For whatever reason, employees are choosing not to use the uniform service, so it's a $2,000 increase in the 2020 budget. Line 4433, this is the one that's to kill it. Maintenance, equipment maintenance. We are way overspent on that line. When I first came here in the middle of August, I basically came into a barn full of trucks with check engine lights, problems that just hadn't been addressed for a while, which ultimately leads to even more problems. So we took a hard, hard hit with all the emissions-related stuff on these new trucks. A lot of that is due to excess idle time, which is a practice that's gonna be stopped. We're not gonna idle these trucks for three or four hours anymore in between runs. We have a nice big building that can hold these trucks, keep them snow-free and warm, so we're gonna use it. And another part of the problem is, whether you wanna hear it or not, you've got, I believe, three of your newer trucks happen to possess one of the worst diesel engines that you could possibly have, from a dependability standpoint, from a maintenance standpoint. These engines are just plain finicky, and they just are inherently problematic. I would suggest that we probably ought to entertain the idea of trying to rotate out from underneath a few of these things. And the age is there on some of them anyway, to think about trading them and getting something that's just a little bit of a better ballgame than what we have there. It's the bottomless pit with these things. So my recommendation would be to take a look at trading up a little bit. If the trucks were older and didn't have all that emissions stuff on them, I'd say, well, you know, look and keep them what you got, but these things are just problem after problem after problem. And another thing we need to look at, as part of the increase in that budget, I want to institute some kind of a computer, a relatively inexpensive computer maintenance program on these trucks, rather than relying on handwritten records that nobody, at least I don't know where they all are. I wanna be able to bring this stuff up at the touch of a button and be able to know what's going on, know what needs what. So there'll be a few bucks thrown at that. There's some cheap programs out there that can be had for relatively decent money. So we have put in for a $20,000 increase to that line item, which will put us up around I'm hoping that the majority of the problems, at least in the near term, have been taken care of, but with this stuff, you don't know. Another component of this overspending of the line item is the lovely reach mower, again. That was a sizable chunk all on its own. And it's not one huge, one or two huge things that are plaguing that thing, it's just a solid stream of small stuff that's just enough to annoy you. So the saga continues. Moving on, line 4663, the sand and salt budget. It's gonna stay the same, because I feel that, I really feel that ultimately you're gonna see a decrease there, or a potential for a decrease. Bear in mind, it's gonna take a while to get there, because currently I have 400 tons of salt in storage. I'm in the process of emptying the sand out of one of my two existing sand dais, and making room for more salt storage, because you have to, you have to have some reserve capacity to take care of the treatment process. In other words, you have to, say that you want to get, if I call the salt company, we wanna get, okay, let's get 300 tons today. Well, if they can't get it there today, but I know I'm gonna need it, or if they can get the salt there, but I can't get the treatment there, then at least I need the room to put the salt under cover and keep it dry until the treatment comes. So we need that, we need that reserve capacity. So ultimately, we will probably end up holding 750 to 800 tons of salt total, to make this thing work without being up against a wall. So it's gonna take, it's gonna take a little while for this all to shake out and see the savings afterwards. The good news is, your sand budget will go down, no question about it. The sand's going away. There's just no future in it. It's always gonna come back to haunt you. That small price that you pay for the sand on the project is just exponentially increased by the time you get done dealing with it. So it's gonna go away as much as we can get it to go away. Upon talking to other road agents in the area that have gone to the treated salt, there's no doubt in my mind, I talked with the Town of Burwick last week, they have a similar amount of miles of road, and their total salt usage with no sand whatsoever in the equation was around 2,600 tons of treated salt for 70-plus miles of road and no sand. And they say they would not go back to sand or even untreated salt if somebody paid them to work very well for them. The town dam, those figures have stayed the same. Ran into a little glitch this year with it. We would've liked to do the concrete work on the spillway, which is not a, it's not a problem, it's just more or less maintenance. Ran into a little trouble with how long it took to draw the dam down due to a bunch of monumental rainstorms right at the start of the drawdown. And we're kind of limited as to how much we can draw that lake down at any one given time because of the condition of the three culverts under Lakeside Oaks Road, which are very, very precarious. If you draw it down too fast, we'll be washing out the road. So we just kept getting rainstorm after rainstorm while trying to draw the thing down. We're just now getting to the point where it's not going over the spillway that we have to repair, but that spillway is now covered with three inches of ice because it got so cold so quick. So those repairs may not happen this year. We can get the brush cut, we can probably get the erosion stone put in that was recommended by the state, but spillway repair, I can't see that ice going away in time to get it done.
As of this morning, most of the ice was on the lake.
Is it? Yeah, yeah. It's gonna take a while to dry it out, so I don't, you know, it's, it's, it's been tough. So that pretty much covers the increases in the budget. Also bear in mind that there's a few things that you can't see in that budget. Two new school buses and cloud truck turnarounds got constructed. And also we take care of the winter services for the Public Safety Building, the Town Hall, some of the school buildings, you know, the highway funds and resources that go to that, that, you know, aren't readily spelled out in front of you. So I think, all things considered, I think it's a pretty tight budget. Again, we try not to waste anything, try to make things better. That's where I'm at. Any questions?
Tracy's in, George.
The treatment is included in line that ends in 4663?
That's the salt, the winter materials line?
Operating supplies.
Yes, that would be.
Put the treatment in there.
It would be, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
George? Thank you. I have a question for you on 4531, the communications. And it's just a question, now, if they're out in the truck and they're doing truck-to-truck right now, and the snowy, woolly aspect of it, what happens if they have a problem? How do they, if they're too far out or too far away from the other truck, how do you communicate personal?
Personal cell phone, which is what we're trying to get away from.
Okay. And the, we talked about the spillway work, and you can only drain so much, is that other work for the other drainage under the roads scheduled, or you have a price on it, or what do you stand with that?
Just now bringing it to the forefront is a problem.
Alright.
I believe at some point we'll probably get the engineers involved.
And one of the drawbacks, Mr. Bailey, is that's a private road, and so the town just has right-of-way access to the dam there, and so it's a politically complicated problem to address.
Yes.
It might cost 80,000 to 100,000 to fix that, the culverts, to the point where we could adequately function the dam. The town has previously rebuilt a portion of that road. My understanding was there was a washout and a flood a number of years ago, and the town did come in to do some work there, so there is some precedent for repairing that road for the purposes of the dam, but it is, it's an issue that we're keeping very much in mind and intend on putting a plan together for next year to see what might be possible. It will be costly, and like I said, there'll be some political hurdles, given that it's a private road.
And a very big part of that problem, which redoing anything on that road, is there's only one way in, one way out, and we're gonna be right in the, right in the middle of replacing that culvert, so it's a monumental task.
There is a second access.
There is.
You can get to it the other way from Caitliff Island Road, that comes down, it actually runs down a driveway and then back up a driveway, but with about 15 feet of space between that and the other access, you could run it, blast it right through, and it would fully connect Caitliff Island Road to Hall Road.
So it would be something we'd have to do a little bit of work on to get it passable, and then we'd be?
Very little. And I think people there would probably feel better about that than having to come down their driveway and lift up the other driveway.
Right, right, okay.
But they are connected.
Alright.
You can get through them.
My last question is on uniforms. You've mentioned that some of our employees don't wanna wear them.
Yeah, I don't know why, but it should come.
So it's not a standardized uniform, it's a laundry service for the rugged clothing used in the department. So it's not a standardized uniform, where everybody's wearing the same color or same type of clothing. This is a clothing service that's available to employees in the, in Public Safety, in the Highway Department, Police Department.
Well, I think if we had a standardized, something to consider, that's gross, I'll just leave it at that.
I wouldn't disagree, the other piece is, I'm assuming you use somebody like a Cintas or somebody for the service. One of the things to keep in mind, there, you can kind of, you know, split the bowl by its horns, so to speak, in that you have folks who might not necessarily get, like, dirty with grease and things of that sort, who are totally fine bringing their clothes home in the laundry room, where just a clothing allotment would be appropriate, and then you have folks who are working in the grease and are really grimy and have oils on them that don't wanna bring that stuff home to wash, and I know I wouldn't want to. So they're more inclined to use a uniform service than everyone, and if you, if you actually start looking at how that parses out, you can have pretty significant savings, because uniform costs tend to be, you pay a small amount for the service, but you pay a pretty significant amount when you get into the laundering, and then if something isn't returned, you end up paying the cost of purchase of it, and it's usually like triple what you can go buy it for.
Yeah, I'm all aware of that, yeah.
I, I.
Because I know they make you buy 13 uniforms up front, and if you get the, yeah, so that's...
Right, because it's six to be washed at any one given time, and six to be worn typically, so it's usually the 12 is the cycle.
Well, I was just curious as to, you know, with a service like that, but I understand the same with not everybody gets grease. Thank you.
Usually if you have a genuine conversation with people, and folks will come forward with, oh, you know, I take them home and wash them, and then there are folks that are cool with that, and then there are folks that are like, nah, I really don't want you to take your stuff home, we provide a laundry service for a reason, and helping them understand that, that's to make sure they're not bringing, you know, any uglies of their job home to their family.
I understand, thank you.
So the total increase on the entire budget is $24,172. We cut a few categories that we didn't think needed to be pumped up quite so high as they were. We combined two categories, gravel roads and gravel road maintenance, and knocked five grand off of that line. You know, just trying to, trying to keep things somewhere near close, so, but the maintenance line is horrible, no question.
So kind of, thank you for leading me to that, because one of my concerns was that a year ago we were told that we had a truck that was unfit for service, which is why we replaced it with another truck, and then this year decided to keep that truck in service to spend a few thousand dollars, three or $4,000 to fix it and keep it roadworthy. Which also leads to the concern is we've added a truck back into the fleet, which means we have an extra truck to maintain, and it adds to the maintenance costs specifically, vehicle maintenance around these vehicles.
Your older trucks are not your problems.
Do we, have we done a cost breakdown of what we're spending on our trucks, and then where they are in their life cycle, and then their maintenance?
Can probably do that. One of the reasons that we retained the 2003 truck that technically was traded for the new one we just bought, that truck is kind of instrumental in the delivery process for the treated salt, because it has the ability to deliver that salt right to the center line of the road. So that truck can basically be used all around town, you know, without even, if we didn't need it rigged with a plow and wing, that truck could get around relatively quick. If we had to do a second pre-treatment during the storm right down the center of the road, that truck would be ideal to do it, because it can get around really quick and fast. It was registered until May anyhow, so there's no registration aspect until May. If we decided, you know, in the spring of the year we wanted to dump it, we can, or I can pursue getting rid of it now. In the meantime, anything that was done to it, you're gonna have a better chance of selling a truck that's got a fresh inspection sticker on it than one that doesn't. So that was part of the theory behind getting it inspected. And in the grand scheme of things, I don't remember exactly what it cost to get a sticker on that truck, but it wasn't horrible, horrible money, but your big costs are in those post-emissions trucks.
Right. And I know Mr. Air brought up back when they talked about this, that because it didn't have the same emission standards to me, that it was a better truck and an easier truck to maintain from that regard, and he had talked about doing a cab-off repurpose?
Yep.
Where they just go in and freshen it up, clean it up, repaint it, service all the major wear components, and then put it back together?
Yep. I mean, literally, on these post-emissions trucks, I've seen personally exhaust systems that the particular filter gets breached by something as small as a very minute antifreeze leak in an EGR cooler. Those things get breached, it can literally cost you $15,000 for an exhaust system. An exhaust system, okay? This is the kind of money that you're talking, and it don't take much to upset the apple cart on these things. Any, the majority of, when I worked at Rochester Truck, okay, 50% of our work that we did there didn't even exist prior to 2008. So this is a whole new industry, very lucrative one, that's been spawned by the emissions failures of this equipment. It's ridiculous, ridiculous. I mean, we're stuck with it, but there's some that are better than others, less prone to problems than others. Unfortunately, we are stuck with three that are gonna be prone to problems.
Is one of them the new truck that we purchased last year?
No.
Are there any other questions from the select board? I know the Advisory Budget Committee submitted some questions, so I wanna make sure they have a chance to ask their questions.
Well, I appreciate the situation you've inherited, having inherited similar situations, but you did get a copy of the minutes that we, from our last meeting last week, where we raised some questions about some more details. I mean, we're, obviously, we've got our green eye shades on, looking at numbers, and we're looking for some backup behind some of them, and I understand it takes a long time to put some of these together.
Right.
But it leaves us kind of in the lurch, because we don't have answers to some of these questions already. So I won't go through the gory details here, you have them. If you could look at them and see if you could reply to us, we have about two weeks until we start to look at our recommendations for all of the departments.
Right.
And during that time, we'd like to have some of the details that we outlined.
Okay.
I appreciate that, because especially when we look at the warrant articles and the need for capital, which you will need, that's gonna be, some of these answers are gonna be critical for us as well.
Right. Well, in answer to some of your questions, I believe you asked for projected replacement cost on the grader and one or two other pieces.
Well, I'm looking at what you would prioritize as what you foresee as needing to be replaced.
Yeah.
You know, not the whole list, just to, you know, 10 years out, but what are the three most probable replacements that you're looking for? So we're looking at that.
My personal feel right now, for as much as we use that grader, that grader is gonna be a, just a little shy of a $300, $300,000 pop right there all on its own. We probably don't put 50 hours a year on it. That could stand a set a while, I think. We need, we need to get rid of some of those problem trucks.
Well, that, that would be fine, if we sort out the three R's, so that if you think that the grader is not imminent, and we can present, then the question is, what would we need to replace next, and what's the timeframe for those, so we can make sure that there's adequate funding and the reserve for that.
Okay, I'll have that information for you.
I have a dumb question. Does it make sense to go out and look for an older truck and purchase it and recondition it, as opposed to buying a new truck that may be more problematic?
I've got my eye on your fire truck right now.
Just to keep the doors locked.
That's them to stern underneath that thing all day. It's got a few modifications we'd have to make that would cost a few bucks.
The...
It's a creep up.
It is. I mean, in all aspects, the thing is just as clean as you can get, and it's old, it's old-school technology, very dependable. The biggest problem is, the radiator is hanging down below the crankshaft, so we'd have to take that radiator out, send it out, have a core put through it, so we could run a PTO shaft of the front pump. It's not all the time, it's no big deal. You have to have the thing shortened to accept a flatbed body or a dump body or whatever. That's probably, by the time you get done with making another drive shaft for it, you'd probably be up to, you know, 2,300 bucks. A big problem is, it's a racehorse. It's gear, that thing will do... problem is, it's a racehorse. It's geared, that thing will do eighty-five miles an hour. And we don't, you don't want
It'll go really fast.
You don't want, you don't want a truck that's geared that high
Right.
in an application where you could be pushing a plow, you're just going to tear up the transmission all the time.
So you're going to change your rear end?
Need your rear end. I mean, I'm guessing you could probably buy a new truck for the thing for a couple grand. You know, that's something we can put in, that's no big deal. But yeah, I mean, as far as, as far as, the thing's got fifteen thousand miles on it. You're not going to find anything like that out here. So we already own it. So it's something to consider.
We'll, we'll ring, let you take your blanket off that long enough.
So it's funny that you brought that up, because we've been talking about it.
Okay. Any other questions from the ABC, the Select Board? All right.
Right.
Good day, everyone. Great job.
Thank you.
You can't call it a dump anymore, Rick. Come on. Not a dump.
All right, just momentarily, Steve. While this is loading, just for the Select Board's benefit, one of the things we talked about at the ABC meeting was a long-term equipment plan in the Highway Department. That's something that the town would certainly benefit from. And our intention is to work on that through this winter in between snowstorms, develop something modeling after what Rick's done in the Fire Department. So we hope to have that certainly by next budget season, but hopefully have some information to the board.
Realistically, it shouldn't just be limited to the Highway Department. When you look at the town as a whole, like, and what I do for my workers, I take basically every piece of equipment, and including aspects of my building, and build out a whole capital replacement plan for all of that. So I have a plan for everything that we have.
Absolutely.
Equipment, roofs, building, trucks, factors, equipment, all of it's set.
And we have a great capital improvement plan that is, that comes out of the planning board, which includes that. One of the things that it has lacked in the Highway Department equipment specifically, is just the backup. The analysis of years and amount of maintenance and things like that. And a great resource in Mark from the maintenance perspective, so we intend to use that.
I'm very familiar with it. It's just, it's only looking at large capital expenditures, it's not looking at your everyday capital expenditures that are part of your, your general business.
Absolutely.
Hi. So there wasn't much changes on the transfer station budgets for this year. The only increase, I was just trying, Connor, I just clicked those.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So the 2020 proposed transfer station and recycling center budget shows an increase of nine thousand, three hundred and five dollars over the 2019 budget. All increases occur on the employee wages and benefit line. And I will apologize because I ran into a slight snafu before I came, and I lost some of my slides, so this was a... For the most part, we've kept, excuse me, everything just level funded for this year. You know, we don't foresee anything really running over other than the part-time line, which, just because it wasn't funded correctly to begin with. But, but they burned it. So I've included that as of today, including transfer station revenue, which includes bulk, electronic tire, metal, and bag sales at the transfer station. I don't know how many people know that we do get a certain amount of money for using the Planet 8 box. So bring all your gently-used clothing to the yellow bin at the transfer station. So far, we've gotten six hundred and seventy-one dollars this year from that. And then outside of bag sales, we've had forty-seven thousand. For a total of a hundred and, I'd say, one sixty-three for total revenue as of today. So obviously, that will increase by year in. This is just my numbers that I include for what we've done tonnage-wise. And I have years past, but things have kind of changed. Obviously, we took glass out of single stream. So this year will be our first full year with taking glass out, and it's been a significant amount. We already have a hundred and five tons. You know, we still have a couple months left. We've got holiday seasons coming up, and so I'm sure there'll be a lot more for that.
Are you implying people drink water anymore?
Maybe, maybe. So, you know, we still have two months left of goals for all of, all of these. But, you know, MSW, we're at eight hundred and twenty-two tons. So, you know, there's, it may not be as much as last year, but we're creeping up there for tonnage of household trash. Obviously, single stream will be down because of taking glass out. And then demo, which is your bulky items, wood, you know, mattresses, et cetera, is at three ninety-four. Just to kind of give you an idea of where we're at for tonnage and how much people are getting rid of.
So single stream will be down, but when you look at it combined with glass, it'll be most likely up from last year, but maybe not quite 2017 levels?
Yeah, yeah. A lot of it's going on the trash, unfortunately. So I don't, I don't know your thoughts. I wasn't going to go through every line for the transfer station, if that's okay. I will ask if you have any questions on it.
I think the budget really is what it is.
Yeah.
It's not a lot to
Nope, to discuss. I do want to share some of the goals that we have for the transfer station for 2020. We're really looking at trying to improve our communication with residents. You know, we want to get more information out to them. There's a lot of stuff that we kind of find out last minute, and it's only when residents come to us with a question of, hey, where can I go with this, or what can I do? And I feel like we need to do a better job, especially on the website, and stuff, presenting stuff at the transfer station. We'd like to introduce more educational opportunities for residents. I kind of break down on the slides after. So we're looking at implementing an information board. So, you know, everybody knows it's the go-to place on a Saturday, so why not, you know, and include other departments if they would like, you know, but we'd like to do something there. Looking at implementing a new resident packet. So sometimes that can be time-consuming on a busy Saturday for some of the attendants to get caught. So maybe if we prepare them better before they get there, it would help expedite their visit. And then, I think a big goal for everybody is to reduce household waste. So I'll kind of go, and I kind of touched a little bit on it, but we need to do better informing people. You know, we've had an influx of stuff that we want disposed of properly, and it's, you know, costing the town. One of them is smoke detectors. But we recently found out by digging and calling around, those smoke detectors and fire extinguishers are accepted at household hazardous waste day. So, you know, these are the things that did, I guess, have a better outlet for people to kind of, you know, just give their information in one place. You know, this is part of the educational piece. We are, Pete Lashapala at Waste Management has offered, you know, we had done it, not last year, I believe, the year before we came, and had a table full of items that people thought were recyclable, and they're not. You know, on here, I have an important, like, myth. It says the recycling arrows and/or number means it's recyclable. And that's not true. So people just assume, because it has the triangles on it, that, hey, I can recycle this. But in fact, the numbers on recycling symbol are not a reliable indicator of what can be recycled. And I didn't really know this. It says, the number only indicates the primer plastic ingredient in the recipe. So many plastics that can't, and they can't be made into new materials at this time. So unfortunately, when you come with some of the items, they have to go into the bulk bin, which requires a fee. So the information board. You know, we're looking at installing a weather-resistant board. And if you are familiar with the transfer station, when you go to the recycling building, there are some windows, we're going to look for the best, I guess, how it would, you know, a cohesive look for it. You know, we want to keep the windows in case we need to use them in the future. But we're looking for a weatherproof board. They're like a kiosk thing. I know some of the hiking trails and stuff have them, but big enough that we can have out there that would hold enough information for people. You know, and I have on there Saturdays at the transfer station is the social event of the week. So the new resident packet is something that we've kind of had on the back burner for a while. And it's something that we can hand out at the transfer station or at the town hall. If we're going to do that, the vehicle permits would only be given out at the transfer station because we keep track of them. So it would have all the information for user fees, what's accepted at the transfer station, hazardous, household hazardous waste day, and then the transfer station hours of operation. And then any other information that people would think that's important. You know, it's a work in progress. So another big thing that we are seeing across the board, and it's not just in Barrington, it's other communities as well, is an increase in household trash. And that's partly because of how the recycling markets are going, and just, people are just throwing out more. So I'd like to really stress to our residents to do better. Do better in the way of when you're purchasing things, you know, if it's, I'm a big advocate to not purchase single-use plastics. And I think if more people could do that, you know, it's, things are created that it's more easily consumed. They're in small packages now, but all that stuff adds up when you're just throwing it out. So hopefully, we can all work together to reduce this. Part of our conversation later on for the analysis is, you know, really kind of encouraging residents to do household composting. And, you know, we are able to get compost bins from NRA at a cost that we could sell to the residents, and they, you know, food waste adds to the weight of the MSW. You may think it doesn't, but, you know, with many residents that we have in town, it all adds up. So hopefully, we can educate people more and, you know, try to reduce that. And then I just kind of have a side note for our holiday schedule for the transfer stations. We are closed Tuesday, December 24th, obviously for the holiday, and Wednesday, December 25th. But what we are going to do is open Thursday, December 26th, from eight to five, giving residents that day and our attendants that day in between Saturday, because they will just be inundated if we don't. And then for the New Year week, Tuesday will be open our normal, excuse me, our normal hours, one to five, but the transfer station will be closed Wednesday, January 1st. And then I would like to stress that if you are coming to the transfer station with cardboard, which everybody is going to be doing a lot of online shopping, to make sure that we flatten our cardboard boxes and do that before you get to the transfer station. It just makes everything easier, and it goes smoother into the compactor. So that is what I have.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you. I have, I have a question for you. Very, very nice presentation. Thank you. The only line item I have is the 4431, the transfer station. You have maintenance.
Yep.
And you have fifteen thousand dollars on it. What, what do you anticipate you're going to use for the remainder of the year, or how much have you used?
So at, to date, we have, and some of it is encumbered, but to date, I have used almost eight thousand dollars on what we are going to do, and it's part of Primex's fire safety audit.
Yep.
We are installing a fire alarm system next door. And what, how we can easily do it, and it's, it's a little bit more expensive, because we need weatherproof sensors for out by the recycling compactors. But our panel over at the highway garage, and I'm not using the correct terminology, but it can house another unit. So we can just tie into what we have at the highway garage. And then what we'll do is kind of pay a portion of that bill from the transfer station, along with the monitoring services for the year.
So what is the method to get the wires tied in? Because I know there are, it's a series-wired system that connects them to the panel.
I, Bob's, that'll carry it.
So you go from one building to another, you've got to get the wires there. And I know we just poured, put a beautiful, lovely new asphalt paving, pavement down there, and I don't want to see us cutting up.
There's, there's concrete in place that we use. It's already in place.
That's what I was hoping.
We're going to cut input.
Yes, and on that fire system, that's going to be set up for ADA?
Fire alarms.
It's a fire alarm system with pull boxes. It's had to be a certain
Yeah, so have a couple pull boxes. There'll be one inside the building and one outside by the compactors.
All right. And then the
I don't know, assuming it'll be a lit orange strobe.
And then when you talked about your info boards, are you going to install them anywhere else besides the transfer station? Or have you given that a thought?
I haven't given it a thought, but we usually, if there is a big announcement, like for the holiday schedule, we'll post it at the post office, and they're usually posted at the town hall.
Answer my question. Thank you. I'm all done, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
So question that I had was, with the part-time folks or voids, how do we, what is our plan around the voids and how do we fill them?
Voids and staff you're talking about.
Yeah, staffing, like if somebody is out.
It's a work in progress.
Is there, now, looking at transfer station and maintenance, is there a way to leverage the Highway Department for overtime or PTA, like, use of highway staff to fill in that void?
It has been offered up, I mean, I don't want to speak, you know, from Mark with it. Mark will be going in December to become certified as a solid list operator. In the past, a couple of the guys have, if they were asked and if they offered, they would fill in next door. But we still have to think about kind of a backup for a backup for a backup. I'm the other backup, Mark will be one. So I know a few of the guys will do it, not many.
Is that something that we want to look at from a job description standpoint, and make it part of the job description, so that we can create the necessary coverage that we need to fill in the voids there? I know it might not necessarily be a favorable idea, but it's a way to ensure that we have the coverage we need, and we don't run beyond there at that point. Tracy?
Are we using any type of online scheduling program for this department, where people could consider if there was an opening in the shift, picking up the additional shift?
We don't, no.
There's some really inexpensive ones online now, where with a position like this, where someone has scheduled and had to pay time off, it shoots out an email to, or text message to all the employees. It could be Mark's, it could be the transfer station employees, and basically says, anyone, you know, wanting to pick up an additional four, six, eight hours. So something to consider. It's usually very little money, and it generally reduces a lot of headaches for management.
So we, one of the things you had talked about was better inform, you talked about goals, and I'm glad to see that there are goals. The second The second piece of that that's missing are, when you look at goals, they should be smarter, smart goals. So what is your measurable objective on that? How are you gonna measure that you're actually being successful at what you're looking to achieve? So you talk about increasing communication. How are you gonna measure your success on communication or that you're actually doing a good job communicating with people? Cause what I find is, you can, when you communicate just about to the point where you're ready to throw up if you say anything, communicate anymore, that's usually when you're just starting to break through and really have an impact with regard to communication.
And one of the things that, a measure of that, more subjective, the, the staff at the transfer station encounter a lot of questions, which becomes burdensome during their normal course of their business, especially on a Saturday, explaining to residents on a regular basis how the entire flow of the facility works. So being able to reduce the amount of times those employees are pulled away from those questions during the normal course of business would certainly be a, an intent of that goal that would be measurable to some extent.
We are also looking at, I know as corny as it sounds, is making a video. And it will show the process and the flow of traffic as of right now on how things go. So you are able to go online and say, you know, cause there's a lot of people who don't realize that how the flow of traffic goes, and there's like a bypass lane if you don't have trash, if you just have recycling. So those are the options that we're looking at. It's something I will have to give back. I think anything that we have now will be better. You know, whatever we add to it, obviously, it'll be a constant, it will be like a living document because things will constantly be changing with things. And it's just giving them another outlet to be self-sufficient on finding information.
So you'd also talked about packets, the library puts together complete packets. Like there's, there's a great opportunity to leverage something that's already done here in the town, and not only can we leverage it from them, but maybe we can help leverage it out where when somebody comes in to get a packet, oh, let me give you the complete packet that has the library information, the school information, the town, whatever is in that packet. But they, they do it, and it's a great opportunity for us to leverage what they're doing, or see if we can ride on their coattails and get into that packet.
Yeah, I know, Melissa's been very good with getting information out that we have with highway and transfer, so I don't see that being a problem.
I think it's important that we share with the residents who are the taxpayers in the town what the incentive is to reduce their, their trash. And that incentive is a direct impact on the budget line, so somehow I think that messaging becomes important for the residents to tie in their behavior directly affects their taxes.
Recycling systems, so you talked about some different recycling systems. There's, there's one that I think I've shared with Connor as well as some other folks in town that were talking about ways to recycle where it's, it's an interesting theory of taking waste and plastic waste per se, and all streams of plastic waste, and turning into biofuel. So you end up with a fuel product at the end of it, and you end up with, you end up with, with fuel and propane ultimately out of it, and you end up with zero waste out of the process. Now, there's obviously a pretty significant cost to implement that, but if you were gonna look in, look at doing it, you'd almost become a revenue stream where every town would bring you all of their plastic and we would fuel all our vehicles in the town for nothing. But that would be a whole, that would be a pretty monumental project to take on, but it is, there are avenues out there, ways to do this. It could be pretty worthwhile to think of. Steve?
Yes, I appreciate your presentation. One thing that we discussed in the budget committee is, we looked at your fee structure, which looks like it's pretty good at general points, but we did notice that bulky waste, which is really a usage-based type of, of waste, where you have construction people and a whole bunch of other people that are really adding a lot of bulk to it. But that one looks like it might be able to be adjusted upward to, so that the town would have to let, do less subsidy of the bulky waste, and it could recover more of the, sort of the costs we have in providing that service.
Part of the conversation that we've been having, which is part of the analysis, is coming up with an easier way and having consistency with pricing of the board, meaning that it goes more, you know, it's, it's, it goes from one extreme to the other. So, you know, having it more of, you know, if it be by, it may not be a right size, but like an eight-by-12 tray, you know what I mean? Like here's a set price for this and kind of work. The, the problem kind of with that is that you just don't come with a trailer full of wood that we could be like, that's gonna be $30. You're gonna say, I also have a TV, I also have, you know, this and this, so it's like trying to come up with that price. But we do acknowledge that some of that needs to be better and, like I said, consistent. So we've looked at trailer sizes, going by cubic yards, you know, just trying to find the, the best way to do it there. And that's part, and that's part of our conversation for the analysis.
So yeah, let's run through that real quick if you want, Aaron, if that's okay with you.
Does anybody have any more questions?
So through this process, you know, what we found is, there's quite a few areas that really warrant attention, and, you know, we've really just scratched the surface with, you know, Aaron's experience there and the data that we have and where we're headed. So we carved some numbers and have a little bit of a plan for path forward. And really, what we're looking for from the board is support that, you know, this is the type of direction we'd like to head for digging into the transfer station further. So this is the steps of the analysis, you know, surveys, either formal or informal, leveraging consulting services that we already pay for through our association fees, putting together a committee. And in your packet, there's a proposed charge for a committee, leveraging the interest of citizens to, to really dig in, understand what other communities do and whatnot. Certainly work with staff input, they live it every day, and we could come up with the greatest idea in the world, but not think of something that, that they would encounter. And that doesn't mean we, you know, don't move forward, but we, you know, figure out a way to move, move past that. And a big part of that too is really looking into the numbers. And so all of this information is available in the packet that you have for anybody following along at home. It's linked to the agenda and report for tonight. So we'll just go through it quick, and if there's questions, these are just some of the things that, that popped out to us. So over the past three years, we're pretty consistent collecting about 50% of the expenditures. So a review of other communities, that's way higher than most other communities fall on a percentage basis. A lot of them are 15 or 25%. And I think a good goal to go into the analysis would be figuring out where we'd like to see that number. I think Steve pointed out a good point about making sure that we're covering our costs with a direct, from a direct standpoint. But we have consistency here at 50%. Maybe we wanna set that higher, maybe we wanna set other goals, but big picture, that's where we are. On the, by category, this shows, like Steve had mentioned, if you look at bulky waste, there's a pretty significant deficit. This is 16. If you wanna advance two more, we'll look at the most recent numbers. There's a lot of consistency, there's not, there's not much for outliers in terms of how we collect revenue in the categories, but.
It hasn't changed much in the years.
No, been very consistent. The numbers have all increased, right? The, the impact's been bigger. But on bulky waste, there's about a 35% deficit, and so that's something that is definitely top of the list. Well, you'll notice too on recycling, Aaron, go back one, I just pressed the back arrow on the, so if you look at the recycling bar here, that's just over 20,000. And now advanced, this is 2018, 55,000. So the cost to recycle has increased substantially, and that's a cost which will continue to increase. And for some communities, they pay more for their recycling than they do their household waste. And so that has no offsetting revenue.
So that all coincides with the bottoming out of the China market?
Absolutely.
And then taking, choosing not to take our recycled goods anymore?
Absolutely.
Which has made recycling almost the net loss of this amount from that.
It is, and so what, what's really important, and I think this should be part of the whole process, and certainly the committee, is recognizing that there's still a significant value in recycling, even if it's not a revenue value. And so encouraging the community to continue to recycle, be more specific and clean about recycling, to keep as much out of household waste as we can, but recognizing that that's going to come with an increased cost. And recognizing that, you know, where we put that, what we wanna collect in revenue is an important part of the conversation.
But you, you can do that with, one, recovering more of our bulky waste costs?
Absolutely.
Which Steve will allow to, which I agree with. But also your household waste, if your cost to get rid of your regular trash is a little bit more, it encourages people to be a little bit more proactive in the recycling so that they're not paying as much from a waste standpoint.
And that's part of the educational piece with it, because obviously, we can do better with recycling, you know, and, and letting people know, the cleaner our material is, it really is better, one, for, you know, the, the marsh that it's going to, that they, they like our stuff. So informing people, you know, like, I know it isn't the best, but it is, we should still continue to recycle.
But even some of that ties back to, you, as you, you've heard me for four years sitting here now and talk about the fact that from a recycling end, if you had like a tiered wall that had your dumpsters so that they weren't backed in one to the other so that you could get in and pull one dumpster and land a new one quickly and easily, and you had the opportunity to have more dumpsters, you can better sort your waste stream processes where you can be like, okay, wood is going here, contaminants here. That way, your wood, your wood waste now becomes a processed waste that can go to epping where they're gonna shred it and use it for mulch or landfill cap. And your asphalt can go in another one where they're gonna do the same thing, they're gonna shred it and it goes to landfill cap. And your cost of disposal is a fraction of what it is is taking it just as a straight waste stream. It becomes a functional process waste that, that has real costs to it and is significantly less than getting rid of any other way.
And those are the type of options that this more comprehensive analysis intends to review, because there are certainly options, and there's pros and cons on the different sides of it, no question. So you'll see there's obviously a significant amount of overhead which has no offsetting revenue on that last slide, and the, some of the categories like our electronics, metal and tire, really relatively insignificant in the grand scheme of things. In review of our bag prices, from a lot of surrounding communities, our bag prices are close to half. So, I mean, if, if we doubled, which I'm not suggesting, you know, let the analysis happen, but if we doubled our bag prices, that would bring in a significant amount of revenue which could help offset some of those other operating costs in recycling.
Also, you guys.
George had something.
Sorry, George.
No, that's, don't be, no. What I was gonna suggest is, when you, when you're talking about the material, I think that if people understand that cleaning material equals drying material, if you could stress the fact it'd be dry, it would really help decrease the amount of weight we would have, and I understand what you're saying, but you say clean, and people look at and say, well, I do rinse it out, but then again, when they put it outside, it rains or it snows on it, absorbs the moisture and gets the weight, and then we have to put, well, we being here, we're at the bulky station, we have to do that. And the other thing is, are we gonna discuss this list, Mr. Chairman, or we're just gonna...
Which list is that? Cause from that far away, I can't.
It's my impression that a committee would be formed and that would be part of what would be analyzed.
Okay, that, that's good then, because I think the rates in the bottom should be close enough. Thank you.
So George is all came to show up with his umbrella?
I'd take a heck of a big umbrella to cover the town, wouldn't it?
So I just wanna cover two, two more sets of numbers just real quick as a, as a kickoff to this. So if you look at bulky waste, look at the increase year over year. That's disproportionate to the other categories. One of the things that tells us is, we need to be charging enough to discourage contractors, especially from other communities using our facility versus another facility like Turnkey to dispose. This is a, this is a service that we offer to residents. It shouldn't be something, certainly that we lose money on, but it's so cost-effective that we're seeing increases like that. The next one is household waste. This just kinda shows a gradual increase year over year. And then the last one of these shows recital tons. Again, an increase year over year, but still disproportionate to household waste. We're seeing more tonnage in household waste than we are in recycling.
I think the big thing you have to be cautious, you have to be conscious of and cautious of, is the last thing you wanna do is put people in a position where they cannot afford to get rid of their trash, and they're taking it and dumping it in the woods. Because that, that adds no value to anybody, it just ruins our entire system.
And the midnight burn up too.
So this is the cost per pound to accept these types of waste. You'll notice on household waste, we pay the same rates for household and bulky waste, but because we have a compactor, that really reduces the cost per pound for our, the waste on household and, and compared to bulky. And so, you know, getting those bulky containers compacted, whether it's with staff and equipment or by other means, would really reduce our costs. And then on recycling, again, having those compacters really helps. Flattening the boxes, getting things as dense as possible. We, we pay over $100 every time they haul one of those away, so the fewer times we have to have it hauled, the better. And then the last thing, which, this is probably the thing that surprised me the most, if you look at the amount of trash, this is just household trash, that we bring in throughout the year. So this is three years by month. I was expecting to see pretty significant spikes through the summer months when we're open that additional day. There's consistency throughout the entire year. This tells me, and I think it's worth digging into more, but what this screams to me is there's no reason not to have the same set hours year round. We don't see the increase necessarily to justify it, they're just bringing in the same amount of trash in on an extra day. So whether that's expanding hours through the winter or having, adjusting the schedule, that was a surprising piece of information to find, so.
And just a, a side note that we have done a couple of upgrades at the transfer station, and we're installing new LED lights inside the building, but a new floodlight was installed on the outside of the building up higher, so it projects across by the bulk bins, cause I know that was part of the problem now that with the time change, it gets darker earlier. So when, if you come, you know, around, I don't know, 4:30, not quarter to 5:00, because we do close at 5:00, we like people to show 15 minutes prior to closing, you'll notice a significant difference with the lighting.
All LED?
Yes.
If, I'll, I'll throw it out there as an offer because I'm not using them, I have a bunch of external halogen fixtures, they're brand new in the box, but I'm not gonna use them because I've switched everything over to LEDs, but I would gladly just give them to you if you want them. And they're just not LED, and they might make an LED bulb for them, but I haven't even looked at it because we've switched all of our fixtures already. You can have them if you want them.
Good presentation.
So in conclusion, do, does the board feel like this is the direction that you support moving and, and figuring out what's best at the transfer station and possible way?
Yes.
We'll bring a more formalized charge for that committee. We'd certainly be interested for board representation and anybody in the community that's interested in participating, definitely let us know.
Is there anything the advisory budget committee would like to add in as we back that up?
Probably my old eyes, but what are the spikes in January and then in December? Which year are they?
So in.
I can't tell the colors.
So in January, that represents a spike in 2017 and 2018, and then the spike in December was just 2018.
It's probably when it fell on Saturday, like, and when it there, when Christmas fell is my guess.
Where's the holiday in relation?
Yeah, where's the holiday in relation to the day of the week?
Then I have a bunch of questions. Partly because more than 30 years ago, I was on the board, and I was instrumental in getting the recycling program started. So all of these questions are really just for my identification, and hopefully you can shed some light for me. With bulky waste, do we deny anyone who comes in with a massive truckload? Or we just take everybody who comes in? I think initially, if somebody came in with a dump truck full, we told them we wouldn't take.
It's few and far between that a, like a dump truck load comes in, I mean, somebody will come in with shingles, you know, that, we've had that a few times over the summer. Maybe like a, a one ton, but no bigger than that, I would say.
Is waste management reasonably satisfied with our single stream?
Yes. And I, I meant to get the percentage, but our, our loads are checked regularly with that, and our contamination rate is below on what they're looking for.
Excellent, that's good.
But we can always improve.
Have we given any thought to going back to sorting?
It's been discussed, but I think your increase will be with employees on that, and I think with the amount of residents that we have at. I think with the amount of residents that we have at this point, it would be very hard to kind of go back. We can, no pun intended, we can clean up our act with it to make it more appealing to people, but I don't see us going back right now.
Okay. One of the things when we did start, which I think was around 1987, maybe 88, is everything we did in recycling was by volunteers. And we had a core of 20 or 30 volunteers who dedicated their time every time the dump was open to do the sorting, do the baling, doing all that that we did. And now, I don't know if that's a problem now insurance wise, but at the time, again, for many years, everything we did was by volunteers. So just food for thought.
As Rick will attest, trying to find volunteers becomes more and more challenging.
We've, we approached the subject, which is part of the analysis about a swap shop because many people had inquired about it. And one of the requirements was to have people on hand as volunteers all hours that the transfer station was open. And we couldn't, they couldn't get anybody. So I know that kinda fell to the side and I know there'll be more discussion about it, but it's, it's few and far. We have one volunteer that is going strong that-
Clint?
Yep. He's awesome, so.
I mean, for the picking through of the metal dumpster, we should be able to get somebody to volunteer for something.
That's probably something we should stop.
That's part of our discussion.
That we have people crawling through, looking for copper and this and that, and that is a liability for us.
Yep. There are signs, but they just need to be reinforced.
Okay, I haven't seen any signs.
Well, there's the no going in dumpsters sign behind the bulk bins, but part of the issue with-
I think the big attraction is the metal.
I know. Part of the reason not having signage there is the container isn't a permanent container, and if we install another structure, it's just something that we have to plow around. And right now, we can push that container out of the way and they can make the sweep straight across.
Yeah. Do we still have the guy who takes them to open them?
Yes.
Yeah. His bin, he hauls. We like that. Okay, lastly, this is where I'm probably most bewildered, is you were talking about the recycling stamp and numbers that don't matter. How would a common Joe Blow like me know that a five isn't a five or a one isn't a one? Is there any way that an average person can determine what is not recyclable or not usable? Or is that only done by, you know, analysis when it gets to the mer?
I think that's part of, I mean, a number one isn't like a number one, you know, your milk containers or soda containers are, no wait.
Twos and ones.
Milks are twos. You know, your soda, soda, soda containers are ones. So I know that waste management prefers ones, twos, and fives. Fives are usually your yogurt containers or I think some laundry detergents, but we do have a sheet for acceptable recycling.
Right, you were saying the numbers don't always mean they're recyclable. How would we know?
Well, I think meaning that, we have people come with Rubbermaid totes with lawn chairs, plastic lawn chairs, because they show a symbol on there that, oh, this can be recycled. So that's more of like your laundry basket, so they just think the plastic shelving, because they have that arrow on there, they think that can just go in when it's not-
So am I reading you right, that things with numbers are actually more credible than things just with the recycling stamp?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Even some of the numbers end up not, they're not recycling certain, certain materials. Like if you look, sorry Tracy, a one, a two, a five rotate, but they don't really want the three, the four, the six, the seven.
No, because there's no market for it.
Right. And the cost to recycle it is greater than the value it gets out of the buy.
Hence why waste management is asking for one, twos, and fives. And, you know, I think if everybody was more, you know, conscious of what they were buying, then, you know, it would, you know, kind of reduce some of this stuff.
That goes along with what Tracy was saying about using the internet, putting that out to somebody to see it also.
I do have one other question. At one point, there was a discussion about having a book bin. I don't know if that's still in consideration or not.
I don't know. You know, it's just another one of, I don't see it being a no, but again, it's adding another container to the property that, you know, we have to monitor and then have pick up for. I do know that there's a book bin down in Lee, but I don't know it is. But I know that-
I've used that before.
I do, so where do we put books?
Does the library do anything with book exchanges?
Some, they have to be in good condition.
That's a good one to bring up.
And then, you know, they can be recycled if they're paperbacks, but right now, and that's another thing that we can look at, like what are alternatives for books?
Send us all your suggestions.
Yeah, I have a handful of items, but did not belabor this any more than we have, and been long enough in the tooth, so. Thank you. And closing comments, once, twice, skipped, I'm perfect. Public comment, first of two. Yes, Steve, you can take it right from there.
Mine has to do with the upcoming discussion you're going to have on the recreation department. There's a report that's coming up.
I will gladly invite the advisory public budget committee to be part of that.
Well, it's only one, it's my comment, the budget committee has not met and discussed this, so this is as a private citizen.
Okay.
It's really that, I can only do it during public comment. And I think that the study that they've provided in staffing is really outstanding and really justifies the position itself. My issue is, when I look at the detail behind it, it appears to be significantly due to program. And so that's a valid increase in a position, but it's program-related activities that are contributing to the increase. I would caution that we would not increase the taxpayer funding for that position. Thank you.
All right. I'm getting there, some minutes. October 28th minutes, do I have any amendments, changes, or anything else? No, I have none, so.
Motion approved. Motion approved.
Seconded.
They're arguing.
Articopide. Napa. November 4th.
Motion to approve.
Second. Articopide. Napa. Thank you. All right. We're right along, staff reports.
Great, so quickly, there's a few items in, on the agenda that we'll discuss. I wanted to provide an update on a couple of items. The, some of the properties that we taxed needed, you'll be asked to sign abatements for, total of $14,853. This is for the second half of the bill now that it's in town ownership, so you'll be signing those. On the conservation commission fund, I met with the conservation commission on November 7th, secured funding for the forest management plan of approximately $4,500 funded from the conservation fund. I also received authorization to spend up to $10,000 from the conservation fund on the first phases of the Richardson Pond Dam analysis. There was, the conservation commission intends to continue that conversation, it's unclear if they continue to fund that, if they're interested in continuing to fund that project. I encourage them to have the conversation, and if they needed to come before the select board to iron it out, they do it sooner rather than later, so we do not delay the project as a whole. Property tax bills went in the mail November 12th, are due December 16th. We've received good feedback from the community about the insert, I'm glad we had support from the board to do that. I have a copy over here if anybody hasn't seen it, although I'm sure everybody's received a copy of the tax bill. And the, I encourage anybody that has questions, certainly to review the information that's available, contact your select board members, but absolutely contact the town hall. We're fielding a lot of questions right now and we'd be more than happy to get people the accurate information and address that early on, so. I wanted to let you know that six staff members attended in the Hampton Municipal Association Conference last week. It's a very accessible conference, just $130 for both days in Manchester. Staff members attended trainings and workshops in social media and information sharing, health insurance plans and programs, public works, employment issues, strategic governance, local road management, trust fund administration, public meetings, clean energy, the rights and law, and court and legislative updates. So it was, it's a great resource that we make available to our staff members. I appreciate the board and community's support in advancing the knowledge of our staff. I met with the team from Corino Construction, Portland Architects, on Friday of last week to see the first conceptual of the town hall, provided a lot of construction, constructive feedback, and they will be implementing that into their next conceptual, still on track. And as you know, we started the process for acquiring the land earlier this meeting.
Do you have another meeting planned for the building committee?
Not at this time, the, once I get a timeline back from when they'll have an update, an updated conceptual, we'll meet with the building committee on it to get feedback and continue moving forward. I'll turn it over to municipal office administrator Connor.
For your signature, I have payroll manifest 201991 for period ending 11/10/2019, the seven property tax payments that Administrator Madabra mentioned, two corrected fees with no covenants returning properties to previous owners, one DRA warrant receipt, and one 2019 utilization mistful assessment.
Thank you very much. Under old business, we have the job description review for the highway support system and transfer station administrator.
So this is a proposed job description to be built into the budget, and the numbers are included in the budget numbers you saw earlier, adjusting this position slightly to include full administration of the transfer station, GIS, using GIS-based tools and resources for asset management in the highway department, and to become a full-time position upon the community's vote in March. So you have a redlined copy which highlights the changes and a clean version for your review and consideration.
I've reviewed it, do you need a motion to accept?
Yes.
Comments?
That was, I was just gonna ask who's gonna vote on it, she took care of it for me, I'm fine.
Motion to accept the newly drafted highway support system transfer station adminis- administrative job description, we might wanna cut that down. Make the recommendation of the title.
I may or may not have, I don't know.
Do I get a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote?
Bailey, aye.
Articopide.
Napa. I'm looking for a hatch and there's no hatch, waiting to hear it. All right.
If I made one item under, under old business?
That's where I was going.
Oh, great. Fantastic.
The intermunicipal agreement for services and general collaboration, collaboration between the town and school, contagious. Does any, Connor made all the changes that were advised for us, plus kicked it back and had a couple of non-substantive changes, I believe is how you put it. Is everybody okay with this for us to move forward so we can have a signed copy by our board in front of the school for their meeting tomorrow? Mr. Bailey?
Thank you very much. On page two, article three, item, let's see, five, row number five, where it says, "The town administrator shall report any concern." I would like to put after that a parentheses F, S, excuse me, in case he has more than one.
Concern, concerns.
Great.
Any other changes?
No, that's all I have.
Motion to accept?
Second it.
Bailey, aye.
Articopide.
Napa.
Well done.
Thank you. All right, so what's doing up? Old business, no, new business.
Road name.
Road name. For 211 Franklin Pierce Highway.
2111.
Map 126, lot 61, I'm sorry, what was that?
2111.
Two, what did I say?
He referenced the agenda, which misstated the street name as 211. The town administrator report does say 2111, but since the same person created both, I will accept the responsibility.
Motion to accept the name Rally Road.
It's gonna be what?
Rally Road.
Where'd you see that?
Isn't that what it says?
It does.
Motion to accept the recommended name Rally Road.
I will second the motion.
Oh, in his notes, all right. Bailey, aye.
Articopide.
Napa. Thanks for that. The recreation administrative assistant position, I'll call on the recreation commission to come out and-
Lisa Alice, chair of the recreation commission, followed by Steve Graves, who appears to be pigtail, coattailing on the road agent's Whoopi pie creation.
Whoopi pie. I think they get rid of them before you-
Hold the record to reflect that Steve Graves did not bring the Whoopi pie.
Absolutely not.
Yeah, okay.
It was put in my lap, I had to get rid of it.
Thank you for having us. In the process of trying to hire a new admin assistant for the recreation department, Connor and the recreation commission asked the staff to compile current tasks and what will be needed when implementing the strategic plan. The recreation commission is requesting that the select board increase the hours for the recreation admin assistant from 25 to 40 hours per week. The increase does make the position eligible for benefits, and Connor kindly helped us get the figures put together, so the increase with the $37,919 to the operating budget, if you approve that, and that would cover the increase in hours and the benefits. In the event that you don't wish to go up to 40 hours, we would ask for 34 and a half hours, because throughout their time putting everything together, the staff have come up with a list of tasks that are currently required of that position, and they actually come up to 34.25 hours. So we're looking to at least get the current tasks covered if you don't want to go to the 40, which would then be a $15,132 increase. Connor provided you with the packet, but we also just handed it out. I'm not gonna go through the entire thing, but the justification of the increase in hours is in there. But to summarize, the duties of the assistant currently take 34.25 hours if all work be completed on a weekly basis by that person, and we're looking to have those tasks plus some additional tasks while implementing the strategic plan that was recently adopted by the commission. That's why they request for 40 hours. The position is covered under the MOU, and that's why we are coming to you for the increase. Any questions, or can I go over anything else?
Tracy, we just increased the range for the position. So with that increase in range at 25 hours, what was that increase for the position?
The increase was in what the person's actually been paid for salary.
Right.
That increase was so that we can actually attract a decent-
What did that equate to for an FTE that you had a?
Terron, do you have that number? I missed the whole question.
It was $2,400. The budget impact to increase from grade 12, which is where it was previously, to grade 13, was $2,400.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments?
George?
Yeah, it's kinda off the path, I'm overstepping, you tell me. What was the main reason why some of the other ones left? Was it because there wasn't enough hours, there wasn't enough money, or it wasn't, the medical wasn't there, or any combination of all of them?
Combination of all of them, from my understanding, was that some of them went on to find positions with benefits and with more hours and better pay, unfortunately, which is why we do appreciate the increase in the pay to attract someone. We've gone through a couple in the meantime, trying to find- We've gone through a couple in the meantime, trying to find the right person, so we're hoping to find someone who will stay, because unfortunately, the training takes a lot of time, which also costs the town money.
Thank you.
So I can, I'll share my general opinion on it, is that I'm fine with 34, I'm fine with 40, but I do request that the recreation commission pick that up. And my, my general premise on it being is if you, we go back in time, this started as a, as a one-person position, and one has led to two, and two has led to two and a half, and then I think you folks have done a great job picking up all the support workers, all the other people included in that. But I also think we've hit a point where it does, the rec does a great job sustaining itself, and I believe it should carry that forward. So I don't, it's not something I support us picking up from the municipal end. And then honestly, you can use that person however you see fit without us trying to hold thumb over it, which I don't think realistically we can do anyway over how that person's time is used and utilized.
Are you telling me you don't even wanna pay the 25 hours that is currently covered, or just the additional hours?
I'm saying I wouldn't wanna pay, initially my thought is I wouldn't wanna pay the additional hours or the benefits piece of it, because that's, that's all a pretty significant added cost. Ideally, if, I mean, if you're looking at going full-time, I'd love to see rec just take over that position as a whole, and then I don't, I don't have any say over how you use any of the hours on it. That's just my opinion, and I'm one of, are you sitting here before you? It's an interesting position to read through, and the variability in the responsibilities. It's a clerical position for a large portion of the time, and quite frankly, in other ways, responsible for some pretty heavy lifting when it comes to the financial responsibilities. I'll be honest with you, very rarely, from a human resource perspective, do you find a candidate that has both skill sets and ends up satisfied in the long run. So it's an interesting position, and I would probably suggest to you that the reason that the retention issue has occurred could be because you have an entry-level support staff position combined with a position that certainly requires more expertise from a financial perspective. And it's very difficult to satisfy someone whose long-term professional goals meet this skill set and still wants to provide the support to other positions. The reason I bring this up is because I have seen time and time again, physicians like that, where you try and combine the two, fail or experience a large amount of turnover and a large requirement for constantly retraining. Have you given thought to breaking it out to two smaller part-time positions?
Not at this time. We haven't given it thought.
That from an HR perspective could be a really good way for you maybe to consider satisfying what your needs are. My thoughts on that. George?
Thank you. I've been reading over here the minimum qualifications, and I can see how difficult it's gonna be when you're asking somebody to have a college degree, high school diploma, I mean, college degree preferred, high school diploma required, and then that goes down further, and it talks about the Vermont system. What is the Vermont system?
That's the rec system that we use to track our participants and our funding.
Yeah, I remember. Never mind. So I, I think that, you know, you're asking for minimum, and then we're not paying for the hours and the living. It's gonna be tough with those kind of requirements, so. And as far as paying for it, you've already listened to me for years, so you know how I feel about that, so that's all I have. Thank you. Thank you.
I agree with what Tracy was saying, and know when I had looked through it, I was like, ooh, there's a tall order for whoever you have filled this role, and I think it's gonna be a challenge to get someone in there for that. Especially for 40 hours a week. Now you're working with a full-time person, that'll add meaning, the wage rate is gonna be tight. The benefits become the selling point.
I have to tell you, Andy, I go along with what you're saying there is for the 40 hours and the rec picking up some of it. I think that's, you know, it's gonna help the town both ways, so, you know, four, and then plus the savings on it.
There's been one increase in an FTE this year for the program manager, correct?
The new program coordinator position.
You have new program coordinators, so additional full-time equivalency was added there. I really, I really, my recommendation is that you go back, break it down, and consider the essential position functions that require this skill set be separated from the essential position functions that require another skill set.
If that tack were taken, is that something, when it comes to a funding source conversation, if those skill sets were separated into two positions, do you have a stance on a funding source for, in addition to what the town currently funds out of the operating budget in the 25-hour administrative assistant position?
I can't speak to whether the town should support adding additional hours, because I, I don't know what the agreement has been, and I think I need to delve deeper into that before I could go support or decline any change in that memo of understanding in the I am the select board member that asks that we do review our evolving fund balance, because it has remained consistently high over the course of quite a few years, and I've realized that on the horizon is the strategic plan and the decision that the commission will make on how and when to spend down that. But my thoughts on that are, in order to justify approaching the select board for that increase and pulling the money from the town budget, I would ask that the rec commission have your plan in place so that when you're asking for additional support, you know what that future looks like and what that additional support person may also be taking on in reference to what you decide your timeline is for the strategic plan.
We have something in the works, which is, we can't go public with it right now.
Okay. So when, I think when that's ready, it's a lot easier to look and say, okay, you've planned, you've prioritized, you know how to execute, you know what you wanna execute, and here's what you need in order to do that effectively.
The reason we were coming to you now is we didn't want to hire someone and then have to let that person go because they couldn't make the hours work that we were looking for. So we're looking to hire someone like now, so we just thought we would try and get a full-time person, that's what we're looking for. Some people don't wanna go from part-time to full-time, or full-time to part-time. So that's why we came to you now.
Would it be worth having a non-public discussion about it? Knowing that you can't go public, but we could talk about it?
Yeah, should be going.
As a closed...
Non-public with the rec commission.
It would be a non-public for land, under RC 918.
What person?
It would be land.
Okay.
It gives an opportunity to speak differently.
And what time do you think this will be? Unfortunately, I get up at 3:00 AM, so I'm kind of...
We're actually breaking it into this meeting tonight.
Yeah, we would, yeah, we would, I mean, the meeting, to be honest with you, we have select persons report, and I don't have a whole lot to chat about, so.
I don't have anything, but meetings are...
And I was at the last recognition meeting, because I was here, so that'll be easy. You have to get some report.
It would be in probably less than 15 minutes.
Okay.
And I suspect there would be a public session, or a control public session.
Immediately following, yes.
So select persons reports?
Mine is going to be tomorrow, because that's the way the calendar runs.
All righty. And my responsibilities are the school board that was canceled for my first half of the month, and the rec commission that I missed because I was here. Planning board had their meeting two weeks ago, because that was the last point at which we were, and there was a, another planning board meeting tomorrow. Everything that was covered at the planning board meeting was the approval of the Renaissance expansion. There, my computer has decided to go to sleep, and I can give you everything that is there. The condos in the...
Yes, the condos in the beauty shop. I'm like, I've got it all right here.
Tomorrow's is only up there.
Yeah, tomorrow's meeting is the zone.
Public? Final public comment?
Public hearing for the solar.
Reminder that public comments limited to three minutes.
I just wanted to touch on two things that Mark mentioned, one being the communications. If he puts a repeater on and upgrades the communications on the local government, that certainly benefits the fire department and the police department, because we both use them channels too. That's one thing, and the other thing is, is though I don't, though I have no real desire to be in the truck selling business, that's, we've headed down the path of, as we're getting ready to replace that truck, there's a number of options we're asking the vendors to look at, one of them being is, is that, shooting, the fire truck will come back to the town of Barrington Cabin Chassis, come back, be dumped in the highway garage parking lot. So to give them the opportunity to, give Mark the opportunity to determine if it makes sense to head in that direction, and if not, then we'll just probably put the truck out to bid from the town. So one of the things we're looking at is to try to get an idea from the vendors. I don't think there's a lot of interest in them having that truck, but that's one of the specs that we're, one of the numbers we're asking them to put in the spec, because if they're interested in the truck, what would they give us for it? So that'll give us a better idea of, again, decide what's in the best interest of the town, whether it's Mark to do something with the truck, or Mark decides not to, then we'd sell it just as a cabin chassis.
I heard he was offering you a premium for it.
You spelled W A L on the ten.
All right. And I believe, no other final public comments? All right, motion to go into non-public for land.
Bailey, aye.
Article five.
I'll second that.
Thank you, but these are all...
Napa, aye. Yes, coming back to... All right. Beginning at 9:01 PM, we get re-entered public session. May I speak, chairperson? You may speak, select person, Connor. Thank you. So one of the concerns I have in reading this job description is that chances are there are different technological innovations you could be using to reduce a large amount of time, both in scheduling, in timesheet approval, potentially in how you are going about filling the people that are utilizing the rec services. And so have you considered doing that type of assessment before putting forward a request for a full-time position that costs $47,000 or more? Okay. So one of, one of two things, that would be a great way to approach this so that it's a very data-driven process, where you have explored the technology to see if you could get down to reduced part-time as you currently have the position structured. And then the other thought is, look at the positions and see if you could do a morning halftime position, and potentially an afternoon halftime position, where you're splitting apart the essential position functions, some which are requiring more financial skill sets, and some that are not requiring a large... I would love to see you guys come back to the board in a few weeks and have some different approaches to this than throwing $47,000 at it, because I think there's a way to make this work. That's my thoughts. Any other comments? I don't have anything else. I think I've expressed it. Connor, do you have anything you would like to add?
Is the, is the rec commission interested in any more of a final decision from the select board before moving forward?
If we were to do what you asked, Tracy, and we could make that work, would the select board consider option two?
What is option two?
34.5.
34.5.
If we could do with the technology, and we could reduce it, and we don't know what that would be, obviously, we have to go back and explore everything, we would respectfully ask you to consider option two, then it would be a compromise.
So I'll tell you honestly my take on that. We're in the middle of a review of all benefits, and at the same time, review of compensation structure, and where those ranges fall, and you're asking for a $24,000 increase with that. I, I think you honestly need to be able to show that you've exhausted all other options and still need those additional hours in order to justify the $24,000. Your plan needs to be in place, you need to show that you're moving forward with it, and therefore you require that resource. If you're not ready to jump with your strategic initiatives, there's no need to fund this position right now, in my mind. If you're ready to jump with your strategic initiatives, you're honestly ready to go with them, and you have your strategic plan outlined with your steps and your dates of when you expect to be accomplishing these things, then it's justified.
So right now, I feel that the staff, and I, and myself, and the rec commission have done a really good job at justifying the position at 34 and a quarter hours.
I would strongly suggest to you that using technology, you could reduce that right back to where it's currently funded.
Okay. What kind of technology would you like to do research?
So you're scheduling technology, so that you're not spending hours...
This person doesn't do any scheduling.
Right, so... But you guys are doing scheduling, or you're paying someone to do scheduling, and those hours could be spent.
But those hours spent scheduling are done by the assistant director, are not affecting how the administrative assistant is doing their job, so I'm not quite sure of the correlation there.
So if, if the person doing scheduling was able to produce the schedule, and then you roll it forward week after week so that you're not constantly looking at it, you're able to use technology to block when paid time off takes place, and you're not constantly looking at, say, a spreadsheet, which is what I assume you use for scheduling...
But you're talking about the assistant director's position, not the administrative. I'm not, maybe I'm just missing the connection.
So your, your point in going forward is that you need additional support to free the three of you up to execute the strategic plan that your board's putting in front of you, correct?
Correct.
So if your time is freed up in some other way, using technology, then that time is now available to work on the strategic plan.
Right, but the admin position right now, with the justification that is asked for 4 and 1/2, can you help reduce that?
How long have you been with that administrative assistant? How long have you been without an administrative assistant?
We have some stopped filling in, but we haven't yet.
Mr. Bailey?
I would like to suggest that we take this to the next meeting, give the REC commission and Recreation Department a chance to put together what's being requested of them and we sit down and review it at the next meeting.
Sorry, I do have a question. Looking at the revenues that have been coming in, so year-over-year gross year revenues, in 2011, 2012, and then again in 13 and 14, you had two years that had really significant gains. What were the drivers in those two years? Because you had 142,000 one year and 60,000 basically the other year, or 59. Yeah, year-over-year gross increase.
Oh, did you freeze, I'm sorry. I'd have to go back and really look at that maybe, but Jesse might be on the.
I think, I just have to look at the years, but I think that that might be the year that we offered the first, the first round of the kindergarten after-school program, but then you can see in the following year, there was the deficit because clearly that program ran in the red that year. So starting the following year is when we decided to go back to two programs, I believe, I, it was pretty much that time period, but I'd have to triple check, but I think that that might have some, something to do with it.
I just find it interesting that you had, you had those two years in there where you went up 142, you had a loss of eight and a half the next year, but then you had an increase of 59.
Yeah.
So if you look, if I look at that and I'm like, okay, where do I make up additional revenue? If you're making up 26,000 a year, essentially you've made up half of that position. So it's like, okay, where's, is there an opportunity for another program somewhere that now can help pick up additional cost?
It's like a vicious cycle.
It is.
It's awful, right? We've gone through this, like what else can we do? What can we offer? What can we, how can we bring in more revenue?
Right. And don't, like I said, don't get me wrong, I think you guys do an amazing job because how many other places are bringing in 400-plus grand a year?
So when you come up with the finalization of your strategic work plan and the timelines and who the leader is on each thing and when you expect to accomplish a large initiative in the first year, who's going to lead it, how you plan on executing it, I think at that point, it's a good time to look and know that you are probably ready for support in some manner, whether it be two part-time positions as described, whether it be more technology to streamline your processes and allow you to work smarter, not harder on things. But for me personally, I would like to see you guys finish where you're headed with that strategic plan.
They, they currently work, the part-time person works five days a week?
Currently, we don't have a part-time person, but if we did, they would work five, five days a week.
So I was just looking, like looking through this, trying to make sure I did justice. So like the daily closeout, I'm assuming takes about, about an hour a day?
Roughly, yeah, we said four hours, so about 45 minutes.
Yeah, 45 minutes. Right.
And those were, again, bare-bones numbers. So that's where I'm just a little confused because I, with what you're asking is based off of the strategic plan where I feel that that document that's in front of you does have the justification for the 34.25 hours already. So that's where I'm, when you're asking me to.
I want to state the obvious, are either of you making up those 34 and a half hours?
Yes.
Yeah.
You're, you're working 74.5 hours a week?
No, no. I'm not and neither is Tara or Jesse.
We have, our, our site supervisors that are helping us with kind of tracking, like there, it's all hands-on deck in order to easily cover for this position.
Might happen for some months.
Yes. Yeah, it's not a combination of just me or just Tara, it's, you know, I have one piece and then everybody's.
So let me ask you something, would you guys consider funding this out of your own funds for a year and assessing if in fact it meets your needs?
And then when we can't afford it, long-term, you have to fire that person?
No, I think Andy gave you a, a good solution, which is at that point, explaining to the select board that as opposed to using your strategic plan to build a rail trail?
No, no, it was like a splash.
That, that you approach the select board in order to help facilitate that large-dicket item.
So go to a warrant article, leave it up to the taxpayers as to whether or not they fund a large project, recreational project.
Typically, we'd, well, we would do.
Well, it's likely to have to happen.
Well, but we would do it the same way we've done other items where there's a zero impact because we've already, we're, we're using, we'd be using unexpendited revenue to do it or we have the capital reserve where we could draw off a small portion of that to make it happen. And if there's zero impact, impact to the taxpayer, the likelihood of it failing is almost nonexistent.
However, you know just as well as I do, Andy, that any, any infrastructure that is built, no matter if a recreation, library, whatever department, is not a zero tax impact in the long run. So, and it would be false to tell your taxpayers that, and you guys have also said that to me several times, you know, that, and we, and please REC commission, correct me if I'm not, you know, if I'm disbelieving, that we have always said, whatever the REC commission decides to build or bring forth as a recreational opportunity in town, that we would always go to the taxpayers to ask if that's what they want and how they want it to be funded. So for us to go to the general fund or the.
No, but that's doing that, if we talk about using unexpendited funds.
But not, not unless if we go for it as a warrant article.
Which is exactly what you just said about asking the people of the town if they support it.
But is that what you would require us to do?
They all know.
It's, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm very clear in my mind, so I apologize if I'm saying what you're saying or repeating myself.
With all due respect, Andy, that's not very realistic and we know that if we were to come with a warrant article, even taking it out of fund balance, everyone is just going to see, as we have spent an incredible amount of time trying to explain, go back and forth and work with you, the taxpayer is just going to see the revolving fund and whether it's zero fun, zero impact or not, that realistically is not going to pass in that way. I mean, I said what you said, that's not reality.
I don't think, Dale, I feel like you're asking the select board, who's looking at that large fund balance, to ensure for perpetuity that you have an additional $47,000 per year out-of-town money and yet you still haven't presented the plan of what you're doing with the $668,000. But, but that's all we're asking.
We, we can't make a decision tonight, we obviously have to talk about it as a board, so thank you for your input, keep going longer and we will come to a decision and come back to you if that's what's necessary.
Okay, thank you for your time. I know, I know you've been up a long, long time.
We're not available December 2nd, so is it too late, the following meeting still being?
I think so.
That, that might be a little late.
That's what I'm asking.
Let me look at our time lines, can you look at our timelines to see what the timelines are?
So the, yeah, the budget hearings are in January and the operating.
Oh, okay, so I don't want to, I don't think that would be. Okay, there's a plenty of time.
I'd like to request the non-public minutes for September be available for review.
We'd like to thank the board for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
We haven't adjourned yet, so.
Motion to seal the minutes from non-public for six months for reputation, not reputation for land?
Ah, you're going to need more than six months.
A year?
I would do a year. So I, I would second sealing them for one full year.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, so.
Before we adjourn.
Sounds like select person Bailey has a request to make in non-public, I have three very fast information items in non-public, so maybe we motion.
Motion for non-public for personnel reputation.
Or land, which one?
Personnel reputation.
Thank you.
I need a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.